Hello everybody, my name is Michael. Hope you're having a wonderful day so far and welcome back to the channel. Today we're gonna be jumping back into C programming, a modern approach, second edition by K N King. Today, we're gonna be starting chapter six, loops. So I hope you guys are having a great day and thanks so much for coming in and welcome back in. That should be a great read. If you guys are interested in joining me for the live stream, I live stream almost every single day around seven P M P S D as I teach myself computer science and programming. By reading books like these and doing live projects. The notes that you see on the right side of my screen can be found in my GitHub link down below. Thanks so much for being here. Let's go ahead and get started. Chapter six, loops. A program without a loop and a structured variable isn't worth writing. Chapter five covered C's selection statements, if and switch. This chapter introduces C's iteration statements, which allows us to set up loops. A loop is a statement whose job is to repeatedly execute some other statement, the loop body. In C, every loop has a controlling expression. Each time the loop body is executed in an iteration of the loop, the controlling expression is evaluated. If the expression is true, has a value that is not zero, the loop continues to execute. C provides three iteration statements, while, do, and for. Which are covered in section six point one, six point two, and six point three respectively. The while statement is used for loops whose controlling expression is tested before the loop body is executed. The do statement is used if the expression is tested after the loop body is executed. The for statement is convenient for loops that increment or decrement a counting variable. Section six point three also introduces the comma operator, which is used primarily in for statements. The last two sections of this chapter are devoted to C features that are used in conjunction with loops. Section six point four describes the break, continue, and go to statements. Break jumps out of the loop and transfers control to the next statement after the loop. Continue skips the rest of the loop iteration. And go to jumps to any statement within a function. Section six point five covers the null statement, which can be used to create loops with empty bodies. Six point one, the while statement. Of all the ways to set up loops in C, the while statement is the simplest and most fundamental. The while statement has the form, while, expression, statement. The expression inside the parentheses is the controlling expression. The statement after the parentheses is the loop body. Here's an example. While, i is less than n, i is equal to i times two. Note that the parentheses are mandatory and that nothing goes between the right parentheses and the loop body. Some languages require the word do. When a while statement is executed, the controlling expression is evaluated first. If its value is non-zero, true, the loop body is executed and the expression is tested again. The process continues in this fashion. First testing the controlling expression, then executing the loop body, until the controlling expression eventually has the value zero. The following example uses a while statement to compute the smallest power of two that is greater than or equal to a number n. I is equal to one, while i is less than n, i is equal to i times two. Suppose that n has the value of ten. The following trace shows what happens when the while statement is executed. I is equal to one, i is now one. Is i less than n? Question mark? Yes, continue. I equals to i times two, so i is now two. Well, is i less than n? Yes, continue into the loop. We multiply i by two and set it back equal to i, i is now four. Is i less than ten, which is eh, which is, yeah, n, right, ten? Yes, continue. I doubles. I is now eight, is it still less than ten? Yes. It doubles, it's sixteen, is it less than ten? No, exit the loop. Notice how the loop keeps going as long as the controlling expression i is less than n is true. When the expression is false, the loop terminates and i is greater than or equal to n as desired. Although the loop body must be a single statement, that's merely a technicality. If we want more than one statement, we can just use braces to create a single compound statement. While i is greater than zero, braces, printf, this statement, and then decrease i. Some programmers always use braces even when they're not strictly necessary. As a second example, let's trace the execution of the following statements which displays a series of countdown messages. T minus integer and counting. Before the while statement is executed, the variable i is assigned to the value of ten. Since ten is greater than zero, the loop body is executed, causing the message t minus ten and counting to be printed and i to be decremented. The condition i is greater than zero is then tested again. Since nine is greater than zero, the loop body is executed once more. This process continues until the message t minus one and counting is printed and i becomes zero. The test i is greater than zero then fails, causing the loop to terminate. The countdown example leads us to make several observations about the while statement. The controlling expression is false when a while loop terminates, thus, when a loop control by the expression i is greater than zero terminates, i must be less than or equal to zero, otherwise, we'd still be executing the loop. The body of a while loop may not be executed at all, since the controlling expression is tested before the loop is executed. It's possible that the body isn't executed even once. If i has a negative or zero value when the countdown loop is first entered, the loop will do nothing. A while statement can often be written in a variety of ways, for example, we could make the countdown loop more concise by decrementing i inside of the call to printf. Infinite loops. A while statement won't terminate if the controlling expression always has a non-zero value. In fact, C programmers sometimes deliberately create an infinite loop by using a non-zero constant as the controlling expression. While one. A while statement of this form will execute forever unless its body contains a statement that transfers control out of the loop. Break, go to, return, or calls a function that causes the program to terminate. Printing a table of squares. Let's write a program that prints the table of squares. The program will first prompt the user to enter a number n. It will then print n lines of output with each line containing a number between one and n together with its square. This program prints a table of squares. Enter the number of entries in table. Five, one, one, two, four, three, nine, four, sixteen, five, twenty-five. Let's have the program store the desired number of squares in a variable named n. We'll need a loop that repeatedly prints a number i and its square, starting with i equal to one. The loop will repeat as long as i is less than or equal to n. We'll have to make sure to add one to i each time through the loop. We'll write the loop as a while statement. Frankly, we haven't got much choice since the while statement is the only kind of loop we've covered so far. Here's the finished program. We're going to print a table of squares using a while statement. We're going to include the standard I O, and we're going to write a main function with no parameters or arguments. We're gonna have two variables, int i and n. printf, this program prints a table of squares with a new line. We're going to enter a table of entries with a scanf to receive the user input and save that value in n. I is equal to one. So we're going to do, while i is less than n, so we're gonna start at one, or equal to n. So we will perform an operation when we get to n as well. We're going to print a eh, integer here, integer here. We're going to insert i and i times i, so i and then the square of i. And we're going to reserve ten spaces here of field width. And then we're going to increase i and go into the next sequence of the loop. Afterwards, once we exit, we will return zero. Note how square dot C displays numbers in neatly aligned columns. The trick is to use a conversion specification like percent ten D instead of just percent D. Taking advantage of the fact that printf write justifies numbers when a field width is specified, summing a series of numbers. As a second example of the while statement, let's write a program that sums a series of integers entered by the user. Here's what the user will see. This program sums a series of integers. Enter integers, zero to terminate. Eight, twenty-three, seventy-one, five, zero as the last one. The sum is one oh seven. Clearly, we'll need a loop that uses scanf to read a number and then adds the number to a running total. Letting n represent the number just read and sum the total of all numbers previously read. We end up with the following program. Include standard I O. We have int main void. We have int n and sum equals to zero. We're going to print, this program sums a series of integers and a new line. We're going to print, enter integers, zero to terminate, colon, space. We're going to scan for user input and save that in the value of n for the number of integers. While n is not zero, we're going to sum increases by n, and then scanf. We're then going to print the sum is this and then return after the loop. Notice that the condition n is not equal to zero is tested just after the number is read, allowing the loop to terminate as soon as possible. Also note there are two identical calls of scanf, which is often hard to avoid when using while loops. Ah, okay, that's, so it. Six point two, the do statement. The do statement is closely related to the while statement. In fact, the do statement is essentially just a while statement whose controlling expression is tested after each execution of the loop body. The do statement has the form, do statement, while, expression. As with the while statement, the body of the do statement must be one statement, possibly compound of course. And the controlling expression must be enclosed within parentheses. When a do statement is executed, the loop body is executed first, then the controlling expression is evaluated. If the value of the expression is non-zero, the loop body is executed again, and then the expression is evaluated once more. Execution of the do statement terminates when the controlling expression has the value zero after the loop body has been executed. Let's rewrite the countdown example of section six point one using a do statement this time. I is equal to ten, do, printf, t minus number and counting, insert i. And then decrease i in this line, while i is greater than zero. So do this action, then decrease i, evaluate this, if that's true, then go back and keep going. Else, just keep moving on. So, I guess maybe with the do statement is no matter what, you at least hit at one time. When the do statement is executed, the loop body is first executed, causing the message t minus one and counting to be printed and one to be decremented. The condition i greater than zero is now tested, since nine is greater than zero, the loop body is executed a second time. This process continues until the message t minus one and counting is printed and i becomes zero. The test i is greater than zero now fails, causing the loop to terminate. As this example shows, the do statement is often indistinguishable from the while statement. The difference between the two is that the body of a do statement is always executed at least once. The body of a while statement is skipped entirely if the controlling expression is zero initially. Boom, we got that spot on. Incidentally, it's a good idea to use braces in all do statements, whether or not they're needed. Because a do statement without braces can easily be mistaken for a while statement. Do this while that, a careless reader might think the word while was the beginning of a while statement. Program calculating the number of digits in an integer. Although the while statement appears in C programs much more often than the do statement, the latter is handy for loops that must execute at least once. To illustrate this point, let's write a program that calculates the number of digits in an integer entered by a user. Enter a non-negative integer, sixty, the number has two digits. Our strategy will be to divide the user's input by ten repeatedly until it becomes zero. The number of divisions performed is the number of digits. Clearly, we'll need some kind of loop since we don't know how many divisions it will take to reach zero, but should we use a while statement or a do statement? The do statement turns out to be more attractive because every integer, even zero, has at least one digit. Here's the program, calculates the number of digits in an integer, include standard I O dot H, int main void. Int digits is equal to zero, we have an integer n. printf, enter a non-negative integer, and we'll scan and read that into n. Do, n divided by n is equal to ten, so this will increase digits after the execution. So while n is greater than zero. To see why the do statement is the right choice, let's see what would happen if they were to replace the do statement by a similar while loop. While n is greater than zero, n divided equals by ten, digits plus plus. If n is initially zero, this loop won't be executed at all and the program would output the number as n, the number has zero digits. The for statement. We now come to last of C's loops, the for statement. Don't be discouraged by the for statement's apparent complexity. It's actually the best way to write many loops. The for statement is ideal for loops that have a counting variable, but it's versatile enough to be used for other kinds of loops as well. The for statement has the form, for, expression one, expression two, expression three, statement. Where expression one, expression two, and expression three are expressions. Here's an example. For, i is equal to ten, i is greater than zero, i minus minus, printf, t minus, integer and counting, insert i. When this for statement is executed, the variable i is initialized to ten. Then i is tested to see if it's greater than zero. Since it is, the message t minus ten and counting is printed, and then i is decremented. The condition, i is greater than zero, is then tested again. The loop body will be executed ten times in all, with i varying from ten down to one. The for statement is closely related to the while statement, in fact, except in a few rare cases, a for loop can always be replaced by an equivalent while loop. Expression one, while expression two, statement, expression three. As this pattern shows, expression one is initialization step, that performs only once before the loop begins to execute. Expression two controls the loop termination. The loop continues executing as long as the value of expression two is non-zero. And expression three is an operation to be performed at the end of each loop iteration. Applying this pattern to our previous for loop example, we arrive at the following. I equals to ten, while i is greater than zero, we print out the message and then decrease i. Studying the equivalent while statement can help us understand the fine points of a for statement. For example, suppose that we replace i minus minus by minus minus i in our for loop example. For, i is equal to ten, while i is greater than zero, less than, less than i. Print f, t minus, insert i and counting. How does this change affect the loop? Looking at the equivalent while loop, we see that it has no effect. Right, i will be minus in this line, and then just reverted back. Whereas in the previous example, i is minus after the execution of this, you know, loop and receives the new value of i later on. Since the first and third expression in a for statement are executed as statements, their values are irrelevant. They're useful only for their side effects. Consequently, these two expressions are usually assignments or incremented slash decremented expressions. For statement idioms. The for statement is usually the best choice for loops that count up, increment a variable or count down, decrement a variable. A for statement that counts up or down a total of n times will usually have one of the following forms. Counting up from zero to n minus one. For i is equal to zero, i is less than n, i plus plus, counting up from one to n. For i is equal to one, i less than or equal to n, i plus plus. Counting down from n minus one to zero. For i is equal to n, less than one, while i is greater than or equal to zero, i minus minus. Counting down from n to one. For i is equal to n, while i is greater than zero, decrease i. Imitating these patterns will help you avoid some of the following errors which beginning C programmers often make. Using less than instead of greater than or vice versa in the controlling expression. Notice that counting up loops use the less than or less than to equal to operator, while counting down rely on the inverse. Using is equal to in the controlling expression instead of less than, less than equal to, greater than or greater than or equal to. A controlling expression needs to be a true statement at the beginning of the loop, then later become false so that the loop can terminate. A test such as, i is equal to n, doesn't make much sense because it won't be true initially. Off by one errors, such as writing the controlling expression, i is less than or equal to n instead of i is less than n. Omitting expressions in a for statement. The for statement is even more flexible than we've seen so far. Some for loops may not need all three of the expressions that normally control the loop, so C allows us to omit any or all of the expressions. If the first expression is omitted, no initialization is performed before the loop is executed. I is equal to ten, for, semicolon, i greater than zero, semicolon, less than, less than i. In this example, i has been initialized by a separate assignment, so we've omitted the first expression in the for statement. Notice that the semicolon between the first and second expression remains. The two semicolons must always be present, even when we've omitted some of the expressions. If we omit the third expression in our for statement, the loop body is responsible for ensuring the value of this second expression eventually becomes false. Our for statement example could be written like this. For i is equal to ten, loop while i is greater than zero, with no incrementing or decrementing happening to i. We could decrement i and increment it, or need to in the loop body. To compensate for emitting the third expression, we've arranged for i to be decremented inside the loop body. When the first and third expressions are both emitted, the resulting loop is nothing more than a while statement in disguise. For example, the loop for, semicolon, i greater than zero, semicolon, print this, i less this. Is the same as, while i is greater than zero, print this, i less less. The while version is cleaner and therefore preferable. If the second expression is missing, it defaults to a true value, so the for loop statement doesn't terminate. Unless stopped in some other fashion. For example, some programmers use the following for statement to establish infinite loop. For, semicolon, semicolon. For statements in C ninety-nine. In C ninety-nine, the expression in a for statement can be replaced by a declaration. This feature allows a programmer to declare a variable for use in the for loop. For, int i is equal to zero, i is less than n, i plus plus. The variable i need not to be declared prior to this statement. In fact, if a declaration of i already exists, this statement creates a new version of i that will be used solely within the loop. A variable declared by a for statement can't be accessed outside the body of the loop. We say this is not visible outside of the loop. For, int i is equal to zero, i is less than n, i plus plus, print, then number i. I is visible inside the loop. If we print i outside the loop, this is wrong. Having a for statement declare its own control variable is usually a good idea. It's convenient and it can make programs easier to understand. However, if the program needs to access the variable after the loop termination, it's necessary to use the older form of the for statement. Incidentally, a for statement may declare more than one variable provided that all variables have the same type. For, int i equals zero, j equals zero, i is less than n, i plus plus. The comma operator. On occasion, we might like to write a for statement with two or more initialization expressions, or one that increments several variables each time through the loop. We can do this by using a comma expression as the first or third expression in the for statement. A comma expression has the form of expression one, comma, expression two, where expression one, expression two are two expressions. A comma expression is evaluated in two steps. First, expression one is evaluated, and its value is discarded. Second, expression two is evaluated, its value is the value of the entire expression. Evaluating expression one should always have a side effect. If it doesn't, then expression one serves no purpose. For example, suppose that i and j have the values one and five respectively. When the comma expression, i plus plus, i plus j is evaluated, i is first incremented, then i plus j is evaluated. So the value of the expression is seven. And of course, i now has the value of two. The precedence of the comma operator is less than that of all other operators, by the way. So there's no need to parentheses around plus plus i and i plus j. Occasionally, we'll need to chain together a series of comma expressions, just as we sometimes chain assignments together. The comma operator is left associative, so the compiler interprets i equals to one, comma, j equals to two, comma, k equals to i plus j. As, all wrapped in parentheses with each sub-expression wrapped in parentheses. Since the left operandi in a comma expression is evaluated before the right operandi, the assignment i is equal to one, j is equal to two, and k equals to i plus j will be performed from left to right. The comma operator is provided for situations where C requires a single expression, but we'd like to have two or more expressions. In other words, the comma operator allows us to glue two expressions together to form a single expression. Note the similarity to the compound statement, which allows us to treat a group of statements as a single statement. The need to glue expressions together doesn't arise that often. Certain macro definitions can benefit from the comma operator, as we'll see in later chapters. The for statement is the only other place where the comma operator is likely to be found. For example, suppose that we want to initialize two variables when entering a for statement, instead of writing sum equals to zero, for i is equal to one. I less than capital N, i plus plus, sum plus equals to i, we can write for, sum is equal to zero, i is equal to one, i is less than or equal to n, i plus plus. Sum plus equals to i in the fo- in the loop body. The expression sum equals to zero, i equals to one, first assigns zero to sum, then assigns one to i. With additional commas, the for statement could initialize more than two variables. Printing a table of squares revisited. The square dot C program, section six point one, can be improved by converting its while loop to a for loop. Print a table of squares using a for statement. Include standard I O dot H. Int main void. Int i and n, printf, this program prints a table of squares. We are then gonna print, enter a number of entries in the table. We're then going to scanf for the integer value and save it into n. I is gonna initialize to one, while i is less than or equal to n in this for loop. We're going to increase i after the loop body. So printf, we're going to print our statement here. And insert the two values, i and i times i. We're then going to increase i and then do this evaluation, i less than or equal to n. We can use this program to illustrate an important point about the for statement. C places no restrictions on the three expressions that control its behavior. Although these expressions usually initialize, test, and update the same variable, there's no requirement that they be related in any way. Consider the following version of the same program. Print a table of squares using an odd method. Int i, n, odd, and square. So enter a number of entries in the table. I is equal to one and odd is equal to three. For, square is equal to one, while i is less than or equal to n. Odd plus equals two, we would print the square value, insert i in the square, and then increase i, and then increase the square by odd. And then return. There's a different way of doing it. The for statement in this program utilizes one variable square. Test another i and increments a third, odd. I is the number to be squared, square is the square of i, and odd is the odd number that must be added to the current square to get to the next square, allowing the program to compute consecutive squares without performing any multiplications. The tremendous flexibility of the for statement can sometimes be useful. We'll find it to be a great help when working with linked lists. The for statement can easily be misused though, so don't go overboard. The for loop in square three dot C would be a lot cleaner if we rearrange its pieces so that the loop is cleanly controlled by i. Six point four, exiting from a loop. We've seen how to write loops that have an exit point before the loop body, using while and for statements or after it using do statements. Occasionally, however, we'll need a loop with an exit point in the middle. We may even want a loop to have more than one exit point. The break statement makes it possible to write either kind of loop. After we've examined the break statement, we'll look at a couple of related statements, continue and go to. The continue statement makes it possible to skip part of a loop iteration without jumping out of the loop. The go to statement allows a program to jump from one statement to another. Thanks to the availability of statements such as break and continue, the go to statement is rarely used. The break statement. We've already discussed how a break statement can transfer control out of a switch statement. The break statement can also be used to jump out of a while, do, or for loop. Suppose that we're writing a program that checks whether a number n is prime. Our plan is to write a for statement that divides n by the numbers between two and n minus one. We should break out of the loop as soon as any divisor is found. There's no need to try the remaining possibilities. After the loop has terminated, we can use an if statement to determine whether termination was premature. Hence, n isn't prime, or normal, n is prime. For, d is equal to two, d is less than n, d plus plus. If the remainder of n divided by d is equal to zero, then break. If d is less than n, print, the integer is divisible by this integer. Else, print, the integer is prime. The break statement is particularly useful for writing loops in which the exit point is in the middle of the body rather than at the beginning or end. Loops that read user input, terminating when a particular value is entered, often fall into this category. So we're gonna have an infinite loop here. For, and we're going to print, enter a number, enter zero to stop. We're going to continually scan. If, n is equal to zero, break. We're going to print, the integer cubed is n, and then n times n times n. A break statement transfers control out of the innermost enclosing while do for or switch statement. Thus, when these statements are nested, the break statement can escape only one level of nesting. Consider the case of a switch statement nested inside a while statement. Switch with a break inside, nested all within a while loop. The break statement transfers control out of the switch statement but not out of the while loop. I'll return to this at a later point. The continue statement. The continue statement doesn't really belong here because it doesn't exit from a loop. It's similar to break though, so its inclusion in this section isn't completely arbitrary. Break transfers control just past the end of a loop, while continue transfers control to a point just before the end of the loop body. With break, control leaves the loop, with continue, control remains inside the loop. There's another difference between break and continue. Break can be used in switch statements and loops, while do and for whereas continue is limited to loops. The following example which reads a series of numbers, computes their sum, illustrates a simple use of continue. The loop terminates when ten, non-zero numbers have been read. Whenever the number zero is read, the continue statement is executed skipping the rest of the loop body. The statement sum plus equals to i and n plus plus, but remaining inside of the loop. So we've set n equals to zero, and sum is equal to zero. So while n is less than ten, we're going to read input and save that value in i. If i is equal to zero, we're going to continue and not increase the sum by i and not increase n. If continue were not available, we could have If continue were not available, we could have written the example as follows. Right, if I is not equal to zero, then we will go ahead and do this, rather than continuing a loop. The go to statement, break and continue are jump statements that transfer control from one point in the program to another. Both are restricted. The target of a break is a point just beyond the end of the enclosing loop, while the target of continue is a point just before the end of the loop. The go to statement, on the other hand, is capable of jumping to any statement in a function provided that the statement has a label. C ninety-nine places an additional restriction on the go to statement, it can't be used to bypass the declaration of a variable length array. A label, which comes up in eight point three. A label is just an identifier placed at the beginning of a statement. Identifier, colon, statement. A statement may have more than one label. The go to statement itself has the form go to identifier. Exuding the statement go to capital L transfers the control to the statement that follows the label L. Which must be in the same function as the go to statement itself. If C didn't have a break statement, here's how we might use a go to statement to exit prematurely from a loop. For, D is equal to two, D is less than N, D plus plus. If the remainder of N divided by D is equal to zero, go to done. Done, colon, if D is less than N, print the number is divisible by the number. Else, print the number is prime. The go to statement, a staple of older programming languages, is rarely needed in everyday C programming, the break, continue, and return statements which are essentially restricted. Go to statements and the exit function are sufficient to handle most situations that might require a go to in other languages. Nonetheless, the go to statement can be helpful once in a while, consider the problem of exiting a loop from within a switch statement as we saw earlier. The break statement doesn't quite have the desired effect, it exits from the switch but not the loop. A go to statement solves this problem, while with a nested switch, if we have a go to loop done. It'll jump to the loop done outside of the while. The go to statement is also useful for exiting from nested loops. Program balancing a checkbook. Many simple interactive programs are menu based, they present the users with a list of commands to choose from. Once the user has selected a command, the program performs the desired action, then prompts the user for another command. This process continues until the user selects an exit or quit command. The heart of such a program will obviously be a loop. Inside the loop will be statements that prompt the user for a command, read the command, then decide what action to take. We have an infinite loop here, prompt the user for a command, read the command, and execute the command. Executing the command will require a switch statement or cascaded if statement. For infinitely, prompt the user to enter a command, read the command. Switch on that command with a case for the command and perform operation and then break, with many other cases to do. And then a default for an error message. To illustrate this arrangement, let's develop a program that maintains a checkbook balance. The program will offer the user a menu of choices. Clear the account balance, credit money to the account, debit money from the account, display the current balance, and exit the program. The choices are represented by the integers zero, one, two, three, and four respectively. Here's what a session with the program will look like. A C M E checkbook balancing program. Commands, zero equals clear, one equals credit, two equals debit, three equals balance, four equals exit. Command enter, one. Amount of credit equals this, enter command two, amount of debit, enter amount of debit is this. Enter command one, enter amount of credit, enter command two, amount of debit, so on so forth until we enter a balance and then we quit. When the user enters the command for exit, the program needs to exit from the switch statement and the surrounding loop. The break statement won't help and we prefer not to use the go to statement. Instead, we'll have the program execute a return statement, which will cause the main function to return to the operating system. So here's how we would write the function. Int main void, we have an int variable for CMD. And we have a float which is balanced, set to zero for, and then credit and debit with no initialization. We have the print statements and then we have our loop here, to enter command. We scan for the command, we have a switch statement over the command, for each case, we have these cases to do. If we hit case four, we have a return to the operating system. And then our default case is to reprint these and then break out of the switch statement, causing the loop to enter again. Note that the return statement is not followed by a break statement. A break immediately following a return can never be executed and many compilers will issue a warning message. Six point five, the null statement. A statement can be null devoid of symbols except for the semicolon at the end. Here's an example, I is equal to zero, colon, nothing, colon, J is equal to one, colon. This line contains three statements, an assignment to I, a null statement, and assignment to J, the null statement is primarily good for one thing. Writing loops whose bodies are empty. As an example, recall the prime finding loop of section six point four. For, D is equal to two, D less than N, D plus plus, if the remainder of N divided by D is zero, then break. If we move the N divided remainder, D is equal to zero condition into the loop's controlling expression. The body of the loop becomes empty. For, D is equal to two, D is less than N, and. The remainder of N divided by D is not equal to zero, D plus plus. Each time throughout the loop, the condition, D is less than N is tested first, if it's false, the loop terminates, otherwise the condition. The remainder of N divided by D is not equal to zero is tested, and if that's false, the loop terminates. In the latter case, N modulo D is equal to zero must be true, in other words, we've found a divisor of N. Note how we've put the null statement on a line by itself instead of writing this. C programmers customarily put the null statement on a line by itself, otherwise, someone reading the program might get confused about whether the statement. After the for was actually its body. Converting an ordinary loop into one with an empty body doesn't buy much. The new loop is often more concise but usually no more efficient. In a few cases though, a loop with an empty body is clearly superior to the alternatives, for example. We'll find these loops to be handy for reading character data in section seven point three. Accidentally putting a semicolon after the parentheses in an if, while, or for statement creates a null statement. Thus, ending the if, while, or for prematurely. In an if statement, putting a semicolon after the parentheses creates an if statement that apparently performs. The same actions regardless of the value of its controlling expression. If D is equal to zero, colon, wrong, right, print this. The printf isn't inside the if statement, so it's performed regardless whether D is equal to zero. In a while statement, putting a semicolon after the parentheses may create an infinite loop. Another possibility is that the loop terminates but the statement that should be the loop body is executed only once after the loop has terminated. I is equal to eleven, while minus minus I is greater than zero, semicolon. Right, so this loop happens, reduces I all the way down. And then we print out zero here within this insertion. In a for statement, putting a semicolon after the parentheses causes a statement that should be in the loop body to be executed only once. So we would say for this expression, right, I is equal, it gets initialized to ten. It gets reduced down and checked at each time, so the loop does take place, it it happens. And then this print statement happens, printing out the resulting I, which is zero. Question, the following loop appears in section six point one, while I is greater than zero, printf. T minus integer and counting, I less less. Why not shorten the loop even more by removing the greater than zero test? While I, then print. This version will stop when I reaches zero, so it should be just as good as the original. Answer, the new version is certainly more concise and many C programmers would write the loop in just this way, it does have its drawbacks though. First, the new loop is not as easy to read as the original, it's clear that the loop will terminate when I reaches zero. But it's not obvious whether you're counting up or down, in the original loop, that information can be deduced from the controlling expression, I greater than zero. Second, the new loop behaves differently than the original if I should happen to have a negative value when the loop begins to execute. The original loop terminates immediately, but the new loop does not. Question, six point three says that, except in rare cases, for loops can be converted to while loops using a standard pattern. Can you give an example of such a case? Answer, when the body of a for loop contains a continue statement, the while pattern shown in section six point three is no longer valid. Consider the following example from section six point four, where we have N is equal to zero, sum is equal to zero. While N is less than ten, scan F and save that value into I. If I is equal to zero, we continue, right, else we sum, increase by I and increase N. At first glance, it looks as though we could convert the while loop into a for loop. Unfortunately, this loop isn't equivalent to the original. When I is equal to zero, the original loop doesn't increment N, but the new loop does. Which form of infinite loop is preferable, while one or four, semicolon, semicolon? C programmers have traditionally preferred for semicolon, semicolon for reasons of efficiency. Older compilers would often force programs to test the one condition each time through the while loop. With modern compilers, however, there should be no difference in performance. Question, I've heard that programmers should never use the continue statement, is this true? It's true that continue statements are rare, still, continue is handy once in a while. Suppose that we're writing a loop that reads some input data, checks that it's valid, and if so, processes the input in some way. If there are a number of validity tests or if they're complex, continue can be helpful. The loop would look something like this, for infinitely, read the data. If data fails the first test, then continue. If data fails the second test, then continue. If data fails the third test, then continue, else process data. What's so bad about go to statement? The go to statement isn't inherently evil, it's just that we usually have better alternatives. Programs that use more than a few go to statements can quickly degenerate into spaghetti code. With control blithely jumping from here to there. Spaghetti code is hard to understand and hard to modify. Go to statements make programs hard to read because they jump either forward or backward. In contrast, break and continue only jump forward. A program that contains go to statements often requires the reader to jump back and forth in an attempt to follow the flow of control. Go to statements can make programs hard to modify, since they make it possible for a section of code to serve more than one purpose. For example, a statement that's preceded by a label might be reachable either by falling through from the previous statement. Or by executing one of several go to statements. Question, does the null statement have any uses besides indicating that the body of a loop is empty? Answer, very few, since the null statement can appear wherever a statement is allowed, there are many potential uses for the null statement. In practice, however, there's only one other use for the null statement and it's rare. Suppose that we need to put a label at the end of a compound statement. A label can't stand alone, it must always be followed by a statement, putting a null statement after the label solves the problem. Question, are there any other ways to make an empty loop body stand out besides putting the null statement on a line by itself? Some programmers use a dummy continue statement, for some expression, continue. Others use an empty compound statement. Alright, everybody, this was chapter six of C Programming, the Modern Approach, second edition by K N King. Chapter six, loops, had a lot of fun reading this one, gonna go back through and take some notes here in the next session. And you guys can get access to these in my GitHub link down below, thanks so much for watching and I'll see you guys in the next one.